Call the meeting to order. We're again with pleasurable legions. I invite you to join us.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with our free and justice for all.
Roll call.
Colpeck, here. Pepcorn?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Turnberg?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
We're gonna do a little, something a little different tonight. This evening, we are launching an ongoing effort to showcase and highlight each of our city's departments and everything they do to keep our city running smoothly. No matter the season, we have city employees serving our residents 24/7, 365 days a year. Our departments and our staff are truly exceptional, and we will be taking time at the beginning of our commission meetings to honor them for their dedication, hard work, and customer service that makes local government work for all of us. We look forward to sharing this information with our community and continue to show the commitment to our going above and beyond for our residents. Tonight, we are highlighting the water department that operates the Fargo's Regional Water Department, or Water Treatment Plant, which serves residents of Fargo, West Fargo, and Casserole Water District. The staff at the water treatment plant monitor our water quality around the clock, ensure it's pure and safe to drink. If you've tried our water, you know it's world-class. The innovation and diligence of our employees at the plant earned them the second place in the nation during a blind taste test of tap water. We will now share a video that underscores the water department's outstanding work.
We have two different water treatment plants here. We really try to be cost-efficient with our chemical. That's really critical to keep our, our costs as efficient as we can be and try to keep the rates as reasonable as we can. We're monitoring the costs daily, each, each chemical and each treatment plant, which is more favorable to treat. The other thing, we do have two sources of water, the Red River and the Cheyenne River. So whichever is most suitable to treat from a cost and quality, that's what we choose to do.
So we have two treatment plants, an older lime softening plant that can produce roughly 30 million gallons per day, and then we have a newer membrane plant that can produce 15 million gallons per day. A typical average usage in the winter time in the city of Fargo is right around 14 or 15 million gallons per day, and then the summer, it almost doubles. We've seen peak flows up to 32, 33 million gallons per day. So attributed to that is a lot of lawn watering. It really increases or doubles the demand on the treatment plant in the summertime. Some of the things you might not think about that impacts the water in the city of Fargo, if there's a heavy rain, there's dams and reservoirs in the state. The snow melt, the spring flooding, that brings a lot of turbidity or cloudiness to the water. And then with seasons, with the river freezing over, we can run into frazzle ice. We have a lot of things that we have to watch out for.
One thing really important to us is drought supply, Red River Valley water supply projects. So we recently completed a pumping station that will lift water out of the Cheyenne River, and it'll run by open channel all, all the way to water treatment plant.
In Fargo, we have to have the, the plant operated 24/7 because sometimes we're making 20, 30, 40 changes a day because the river in Fargo can change really fast. And we really strive to provide consistent water quality. We have online instrumentations and operators constantly looking at water quality trends, the flows that are going out of the plant, the chemicals that we're using. Our river is very challenging, and we do have to make a lot of changes throughout the day. So in the city of Fargo, you know, we do have 11 water towers, and we have a computer model of the entire water system, which has all of the pipes, all the water towers, our ground storage reservoir in it. In a typical water tower, when you design them, you can think of it as having a couple different sections in the water tower. One of the sections is used for fire protection. If there's a fire in town, there's water that's readily available to the hydrants in the city. There's another section in the water tower that's for equalization storage. So like, in the morning, when everybody's using the water, there's a really big demand on the water system. And then there's one other section in the water tower that's kind of reserve or emergency storage also.
One of the cool things about working in Fargo is we, we work with several other departments. We, we work, I think, very well as a, as a team together in getting projects done. So it's really important so we deliver really good projects for our citizens.
As we spotlight achievements of our city departments, we are instituting a new honor of our city employees called the Fargo Rising Star Award. In each department, the award will go to employee who has been with the city of Fargo for seven years or less and has gone above and beyond in their service to the community. Tonight, we bestow our very first Fargo Rising Star Award. The recipient was chosen by the department leadership at the water treatment plant. This award goes to Matt Hager. Matt is a water treatment plant operator number three. He currently holds the second highest license in the state of North Dakota that certifies him as having the knowledge to be a water treatment plant operator, and he's actively working on obtaining the highest license. Matt has worked for the water treatment plant for over three years. His duties are focused on complex operations of the plant and the drinking water pumping stations across the region. His work includes logging regulatory information, monitoring the computer control system, laboratory testing, plant flow changes, chemical adjustments, water plant maintenance, and several other tasks. Matt has a calm demeanor. He is friendly and helpful to his coworkers. He always shows a positive attitude. Congratulations, Matt. You are the Fargo Rising Star. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda, move of item one from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, and adding an extra item at the end is yet that effectively immediately any overtime hours must be approved ahead of time by the Fargo City Commission? Is there a motion?
Let's move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes February 18, 2025, regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor again, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the extended agenda items one through 29 excluding item one, which we moved to regular agenda, and changing the wording of the bid on item 10 to Eagle River Utility Solutions to the amount of 2,000, $235,468? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpeck?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Regular agenda, we have a presentation by Gate City Bank for the 2025 Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative Program. Nicole Crutchfield to explain.
So, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Today, we have the Gate City Bank team. I'll let them introduce themselves, as we're excited to introduce the next round of funding for the Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative, NRI program. In 2024, there were a total of 38 applications with 16 were submitted, and there was a mapping or packet that shows the, the spread of where those locations are, and those totaled $910,000 in home improvements. The loans that were granted by the NRI were $56,000. And so as you can see, tonight's check is with basically $2 million. And so there is an ask for those that are interested in the program. We're looking for people who are interested in improving their homes over 40 years old in the rough geography east of the interstate and north up to our, through our city limits, and south basically down to 32nd Avenue. And loans between 10 to $100,000 are offered with a competitive interest rate. And so for those that might be interested in watching tonight to learn more about the program, are welcome to talk to the planning department, and 241-1474, or email us directly. And I'll hand it over to Brandy to say more about the program.
Yes, thank you so much for having us tonight. I've got Christina Clark and Pam Krupke, the primary lender downtown Fargo for the program. Just really excited to be here to present the program again to you. We're incredibly thankful for our communities we call home, and we're proud to invest in them, and the Neighborhood Revitalization Program does just that. This program is one of the multiple similar programs we offer across our footprint and is designed to revitalize our neighborhoods. Open to questions for you, from you guys to see what you have for us today.
Any questions? Commissioner Pepcorn?
I don't have any questions, but just wanted to thank you. And it's, we were talking ahead of time that I think it's neat in some of the existing neighborhoods, if one person improves their home, it has a tendency to influence other people, their next-door neighbors and things. So, and I can speak from past experience. We used to rent a house a long time ago, and it wasn't very good on energy, but to have this to improve the windows, the insulation, all those things, it saves on your heat bill and saves you money, especially when you're in college. So I can vouch for that. So thank you very much for doing it. We appreciate it. Obviously, Gate City has great partners, and $2 million, that's a lot of improvements on our older homes. Imagine how much, you know, heating costs you could save if you do that. So we would encourage people to participate, and it's a great thing. So thank you.
Thank you for having us. Yes, we're excited to continue to invest in our communities and keep them vibrant for years to come, so.
The other figure that we had is it's 127 million that's been in this program since 2003. I think the public has to know that's a huge investment into our neighborhoods. And John, you always like to have the older neighborhoods fixed up. This is a great program. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will jump to Jen Fall. If you could do the presentation of the annual review of the FM Ambulance, if I could do that now? It has you in it, introducing. Chief Dirksen will introduce, okay?
Sorry, just a little confusion here tonight. We didn't, didn't figure it out ahead of time. So tonight, we have FM Ambulance here. They come, come in front of you once a year just to talk about their statistics and the, how, how they're serving our community. They're not a city department, but we all work very closely together. So tonight, we have Tim Meyer, the director of FM Ambulance. And so I'll turn it over to Tim, or Sanford Ambulance. It's not FM anymore. You gotta get it right. So, but Tim Meyer with Sanford Ambulance.
Yep, thank you, Chief. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, as Chief Dirksen said, my name is Tim Meyer. I'm the senior director for Sanford Ambulance, and this is our annual report. Okay. So we have 140 team members that work over at the ambulance service. Forty-one of those are EMTs. We have our own dispatch center. So we have a dozen dispatchers and 87 paramedics that work at the ambulance. One thing that's different from this year compared to last year, we have more EMTs as a ratio of employees. It's very hard to find paramedics these days, so we've, we were, we're hiring more EMTs. We're an accredited ambulance service. We're the only accredited ambulance service in North Dakota and one of four ambulance services in Minnesota that are accredited. We had an accreditation site visit last spring. We do that every three years. It's a voluntary thing. The standards are different than state licensure. They look at the entire operation, including employee well-being and financial practices, that type of thing. So it's a pretty comprehensive look at the ambulance service. We, at the end of that survey, we had zero deficiencies, and the surveyor told us that we were in the top, sorry, in the top 1% of ambulance services in the country. So we're pretty proud of that. Here's a heat map that shows how we deploy the ambulances throughout the city. Of course, we look at the entire metro area as one response. We cover the whole, whole city. So we have a number of posting sites. Some of them are in parking lots or, and, and we have six buildings throughout the city. So we know that the, the city's moving southward, and it's in our long-range plans, put more resources towards the south of Fargo and West Fargo, because that's the way the, the direction the city's growing. Last year, in the city of Fargo, we had a little over 15,000 ambulance calls. So the bar graph that you see in front of you is broken down by month, and the top, the darker part of the bar graph is transported patients, and then there's not transported patients or no patient contact. So some of those might be, there was no patient found. Somebody called 911, we responded, there's nobody there. Or it might be a standby for a police or a firemen, something like that. But we do, about 65% of our calls result in a transport. Over time, this is the last five years of call data within the city of Fargo, and it has stayed pretty consistent. There was a couple years in the COVID years where we spiked up, had to few, an average of more calls per day, but we've, that had settled back after COVID subsided. This slide shows the response types that we go to. So we do a thing with the Red River Regional Dispatch Center called Emergency Medical Dispatch. So every call, if you ever call 911 with a medical emergency, they go through a lot of questions, and it's an algorithm that they follow to determine which assets are appropriate. And from that, we, through our own process, we've decided which, which conditions need a lights and siren response. So about 50% of the calls, we respond to with lights and sirens, and about 50% are not. Now, we know that we only transport about 2% of the people with lights and sirens, and nationally, there's been studies out there that actually about 7% of all ambulance calls are emergencies. So we over-triage by going to 50% of them with lights and sirens. But that's a process we're in partnership with the dispatch center in town. They answer the calls. So the top part of the bar graph is the calls that we respond to emergency in, in emergent mode, and there's a slight coloration between the bars. That's, that would be calls that are downgraded to non-emergent. So we started off with lights and sirens, and then we downgraded based on the EMD coding that the dispatch center does. Then there's the non-emergent calls, which is a, a fair amount of the calls where they have been coded down to be non-emergent right off the bat. And then once in a while, we get some non-emergent calls that are upgraded to emergent. So that happens as well. Here's our response time performance for 2024. Overall, our goal, our goal is to hit 90% of the calls in nine, in less than nine minutes. So at the year's end, I think our response time goal, we met that goal 93% of the time. It did taper off. We had the month of December where we were at 89%, but that did rebound in January and February of this year. Here are the top 10 primary impressions. And I say this every year, but some of them are, are kind of grouped in together to be behavioral or along that line. So we have alcohol use, behavioral psychotic psychiatric episode, anxiety, emotional upset. So they're kind of similar things that, in that sense, it's the most common thing that we go on are behavioral health calls. It, it doesn't mean that that's the majority of the calls, because we have many different categories of calls, that that's just the most common one. And largely, that has remained constant in Fargo. Nine of the 10 of these conditions were the same last year. The only change was back pain, made the list, and replaced extremity pain. Here's the destinations. The top darker blue part of the bar is, represents the patients we transported to Ascencia. The middle lighter blue area is Sanford, and then the VA is the green area at the bottom. So this kind of splits down the market. We take people to the hospital they want to go to. It's important to them. It's, they want to have continuation of their, their care, and all their records are there. We want to do that. Here's, we gathered data to that end, too. So destination choice, who makes that choice? And by, by far, it's the patient or the patient's family tells us which hospital they'd like to go to. Once in a while, it's a physician. And there's an occasion where we would go to the, the closest hospital just because the patient's condition is that dire. But that's kind of rare, too. So we're proud that we are a Mission Lifeline Gold Award member. So the American Heart Association designates ambulance services that participate in this program, and we've been fortunate enough to have done this every year since its inception. I think one of about 18 ambulance services in the United States that have been designated every year, and we are one of them. So within that Mission Lifeline process, we are evaluated at nine standards for stroke and heart attack care, and we have to coordinate with the hospitals. We want to make sure somebody's having a heart attack that they can get into the cath lab versus getting balled up with the processes in the emergency room. So we work closely with both Ascencia and Sanford to that goal. For time-critical emergencies, our average response time is about 6 minutes and 55 seconds, and those are, those are calls that are stroke, STEMI. STEMI is a heart attack. Other critical calls, which could be airway problem or trauma. So those are categories we call time-sensitive, and we, that's our response time average there. So we do submit cardiac arrest data to a group called the MyCares.net, and they use this standard called the Utschene Score. Fargo has really good numbers for cardiac arrest management. In fact, 23.5% had bystander AED. Nationally, that's about 12.6%. 100% of the people that were in a shockable rhythm that had bystander CPR or an AED applied survived in this. And it's not just that they survived to make it to the hospital, they survived to go home. So we're doing a really good job in the city of Fargo with cardiac arrest management, and that takes a lot of partnerships with the, with the ambulance and the fire department and other public safety responders and the hospitals. So we're pretty proud of that. But it kind of proves that we've got a pretty good system here. And every year, we do get a few questions about opiate overdoses. In this year, in all categories, we're down a little bit. So the number, number of overdoses, opiate overdoses that we respond to is down about 34%. In the middle bar, that shows the patients that received Narcan in the field. That's also down a bit. And then the number of doses of Narcan, because sometimes people get multiple doses, that's why that bar is bigger. But I guess the takeaway from this slide is the opiate overdoses are, are down. However, we found that many, oftentimes, an overdose has, has multiple drugs involved, and some of them are not opiates. So Narcan does not impact that. So we have poly medication use. And that's, that's a growing trend. Wouldn't you say, Kathy? Kathy's my expert. She's keeping me honest here. As you can see, this is overdoses over the last five years. It hasn't changed a whole lot, although slightly larger in 2023. And just kind of a feel-good slide, we deal with five babies in the field in Fargo. So that's kind of cool. It's always exciting when that happens. But that's the report for the ambulance service. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions by the commission? Commissioner Strand, are you happy with that?
I, I, Tim, I'm just curious, after the July shooting incident with our law enforcement in town, what has changed in your department in how we respond to incidents like that? And what type of safety issues are on your radar now that maybe weren't before? And what are your needs in that capacity going forward?
Well, we always, one of the cornerstones of EMS training is, is the scene safe. So we don't, we want our guys to go in after everything's secure, right? We rely on law enforcement to keep us safe as well. Of course, that's, it's, I was in an amazingly tragic event, and our guys were impacted. We did, we do have our own PAC team, Peer Assistant Crisis Team. So we, we did a lot of counseling with that, those folks. And of course, some of them may have gone on and to use EAP for their own mental health issues. But it, it is dangerous out there. We rely heavily on law enforcement. They do a good job keeping us safe. Oftentimes, they'll even follow us to the hospital. Sometimes, they ride in the ambulance. So I think we have a good partnership with law enforcement. Yeah, I, I can't say anything bad about the system here.
Commissioner Colpeck?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you to you and your team for what you do every day. I also would be remiss not to thank both the dispatch center, I serve on that authority board, as well as the collaboration and partnership with the fire departments and the police department. It's interesting that 15, you just had 15,453, I think, calls last year. That's really similar to the number of fire calls that we had just in Fargo. So it's an interesting number. I guess my question for you would be if there's anything that you want the community to know about you and your team, or an ask for the communities that you serve? And I'm putting you on the spot, Tim. I'm sorry. I should have given you a heads up. I was gonna ask that, but what would you say?
Well, I think the biggest challenges for ambulances, not just our ambulance in Fargo, it's all ambulances in the United States, is our recruitment and retention. And of course, we're, we don't, we're not funded by the tax base, so we send out, we build people. And insurance companies at that, and Medicare, Medicaid have always been well below the cost of doing business for ambulance services. So to be honest, those expenses get shifted onto other folks that have different paying insurance. So those are our challenges. We are trying to be creative to recruit people. We have our own academy now. So it takes a long time to be a paramedic. It's about a 14-month training program. But what we found is it's hard for people to take that much time off to move into new careers. So we're actually, we hire them, just like the police department or the fire department, and their employees while they go to school, with the hope that they finish paramedic training and can work for us at the other end of it. So we're trying to be creative in how to get the workforce interested in our, in our jobs. It has turned a bit of a corner. It was maybe at a low point during COVID. I think a lot of people got out of EMS just because of increased risk to their, to the, you know, to be honest, it was difficult to deal with all of the precautions, wearing a mask all the time. It's really hard. And people just got burned out. So a lot of people left. But I think that ticked his, that trend has ticked the other way. So we're, we're turning a corner. Hopefully, we're making a headwind, headways into recruiting. But that, those are our challenges, recruiting and retention primarily.
Thank you.
Well, Tim, your numbers on stroke and heart are excellent. That's really what you want in a community, and our community has a lot of aging population. So those are statistics you like to see, because you can actually save people. So I think you're doing a great job in that regard, and your numbers still continue to climb. You still see a lot of people. I think Commissioner Strand, we like to see the opioid deaths going down a bit. That's a difficult task as well, but the, having Narcan on board has really helped police and fire, and I think you guys have done a great job. So keep up the good work. Hope we can recruit.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you for your report.
All right, thank you.
We'll go to public hearing 31. It's a continuance of vacation plot portions 22nd Street North, remainder of 8th Avenue North, line west of 21st Street North. And we just could have a motion to continue this hearing, please.
Let's move.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Popcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Next public hearing, continuing from four fourteen twenty-fifth, application to transfer Class A alcoholic beverage license at Borrowed Bucks to No Blue. That also is going to be a continuance. Can I have a motion?
All right, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Popcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
And in a public hearing, a continuous again from four fourteen twenty-five, application for ownership change of Class A alcoholic beverage license at five eighteen properties. Doing businesses five eighteen properties located at four five five four Seventh Avenue South. I have a motion to continue this.
I see move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Popcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Now, we'll have a public hearing. Application for ownership change, Class F A Golf Alcoholic Beverage License from Spirit Properties Doing Business Edgewood Tavern to Edgewood Tavern, Doing Business Edgewood Tavern, located at the nineteenth Golf Course Road. Steve Sprague to explain and?
And Angie Bears with me today.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So the first item that we have here is the F A Golf License was owned, the owner was Spirit Properties. They're transferring it actually to the manager, and the manager is going to run the business up there. He does a significant amount of catering with his license. And so he should be able to meet the food requirements during the summer. The the food requirements drop for the F A Golf License. We've done the background check, and it does come to you with a recommendation of approval from the Liquor Control Board.
Is there anyone, President, wishes to speak to this application? Is there anyone, President, wishes to speak to it? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
That's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Popcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public hearing, special assessments for nuisance abasement fees. Steve Sprague to explain.
So annually, we we used to do the nuisance payment one time a year and put everything together. We found that by splitting it up a little bit and taking the the things that occurred last summer and do them now. And then we'll get the snow removal come this summer. And so at this time, we're presenting the mowing Dutch Elm disease code enforcement. The code enforcement is typically like boarding up a building and that type of thing. And so those are the items that we're bringing to you at this time. The the individuals, after the work is done, we send them, we put them into our accounts receivable system and send them invoices monthly. They have the opportunity to pay at that time. They are also noticed before the work is done. So, you know, before we go out and mow, we let them know that they have to get that done. And then at this time, then we determine if they haven't paid us, we'll just put it towards their property taxes and collect it that way.
Steve, you have a bill of six thousand dollars and somebody for a D E D. What would that be, five-year?
D E D is Dutch Elm disease and five-year, we, it was a recommendation from Commissioner Strand a few years ago that we give an opportunity to spread that payment out rather than being in one payment. And so the five-year D E D allows them to pay that six thousand dollar tree removal over that five-year period.
Is there anyone, President, wishes to speak to the nuisance abasement fees? Is there anyone wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Popcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Special assessment for sewer repairs. Steve Sprague to explain as well.
I'm going to let Angie do this one.
Oh, okay, good.
Thanks, Steve. So the city of Fargo has maintained a program to assist with sewer repairs for some time. The sewer repair program consists of two parts. First part is if the repair goes to the main and replaces the Y, the city tries to cover the cost of digging in the street. So the city pays half of the first four thousand dollars and twenty-five percent after the first four thousand dollars. The second part is the homeowner share can be put on assessments, and that's for a fifteen-year period with an interest rate of five percent. For your consideration, the list of sewer repairs formed twenty twenty-four are presented. The totals for that are two million seven hundred seven thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars with two hundred and three properties involved.
So so this goes to their special assessment bill once this goes through?
Yes, it does.
You have an opportunity. If they want to pay it off sooner, they can?
Correct.
Just like any of the specials?
Yes.
Okay. So anyone special, is there one President wishes to speak to the sewer assessment? Is anybody wanting to speak to the sewer assessment? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Strand?
Thank you. Stephen, is it Angie?
Angie.
I'm just curious about insurance programs provided out there. So if somebody has one of these incidents, they get insured. How active are we in sharing that information? Or do people have to just go find it on their own? How does that all work? And how do they get coverage so that they don't get a twenty or thirty thousand dollar bill?
A lot of people will contact their homeowner's insurance directly and put a rider on on their policy to cover sewer backup. Or in some cases, they're, if they have good insurance, basically, it'll it'll extend to the cost to help cover some of the cost of going to the main. If people ask me, I would recommend like a cap on that so that that doesn't get too expensive, maybe, you know, so that cover up to ten thousand dollars of it. Typically, what we've been seeing is the total cost for a sewer repair in that eighteen thousand dollar range right now, with the city covering fifty-five hundred and twelve-five going to the homeowner.
And lastly, are they all in winter? Does weather trigger most of these incidents? Or I'm dumb about this?
Oh, gosh, it it can really vary. You know, it's it's a lot to do with older areas of town and just the the heavy soils we have deteriorate the clay pipe. And so the other thing is is tree roots, you know? And we've seen some people that want to just, you know, they're just tired of calling in the the rotor ruder guy every six months or something like that. And they just want to know, you know, for peace of mind, that they've, that their sewer repair is functioning. Or their sewer line is functioning. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Popcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Number thirty-eight, recommendation to authorize Fargo Dome Authority to develop proposal for the Fargo Dome to be a possible location for the new convention center. Dave Supas to explain it. Ian as well, I guess.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Word before you hear as the Fargo Dome, there's a, the reason is a why purpose and an ask. And specifically to the why is through visiting with Council Esquire Johnson and Esquire McLean over here. We've learned that in the Fargo Municipal Code thirty-four dash zero one is that the Fargo Dome doesn't have necessarily the explicit powers to pursue responding to an RFP on a convention center that is, we're anticipating to come down sometime in the future here. So that's the why. It's not explicitly implied. The reason, I guess that also goes along with the purpose, is to come before you and ask the city commission to grant the Fargo Dome Authority permission to respond to this RFP for the convention center when that becomes available. And so the ask is, and I'm not sure if that's, the resolution would be up, or perhaps it's in your pack, is we have a specific resolution that we'd present to the Fargo Commission to receive, and that is to authorize the Fargo Dome Authority to work with the city Fargo staff to explore and develop proposals for the Fargo Dome to be a site for the new convention center project and to submit the proposal to the city in accordance with the respective RFP process. So that's our our purpose. It's a housecleaning item to give us a clean path to respond to that RFP for the convention center when it becomes available. Nothing more, nothing less.
Ian, he almost sounded like an attorney. Do you want to confirm what he says is true?
I have nothing more to add.
That's it.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think this is a good way in which the Fargo Dome can actively compete for the convention center site. I mean, there will be a lot of competition, as we well know. But you guys did at one time propose a convention center at your site, so you should be able to come up with maybe a proposal that'll be competitive. So we wish you luck with that.
Appreciate it. Looking forward to when it comes out.
Roll call vote, please.
Popcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Recommendation to waive a fee for privately-owned lead service line replacements with the completed EPA mandated follow-up requirements. Project WA two four oh three. Troy Hall, this was great work done by your team. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Yeah, this is, this is a big project for the city. Just want to thank you for the, we have a meeting with Finance Committee. Appreciate the input and feedback there. Only have a few short slides here, but this is, what this recommendation is tonight is the local share to go along with the up to over twenty-three million in federal and state grant funding. And then the majority of the lead service lines in Fargo are on the on the private side, privately owned between the curb stop and the house. And there, a lot of them are in the core neighborhoods. So and with this, the goal of this overall is we have grant funding available officially for five years to try and get as many lead service lines out of out of service as we can.
Any questions? Mr. Colpak, you want to comment on?
No, I'll just, I'll echo them. Great work done by the team over several months, understanding the regulations and actions and some really thoughtful recommendations are coming forward. So thank you to everyone who has been involved.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And with this, with the grant funding, unfortunately, it's not retroactive. So we just got to move move forward as best we can. But in this, in the map here, we have kind of a little more blown up of the downtown, but all the red dots are the lead service lines in Fargo. So the inventory that we know right now, there's about twenty, just a little over twenty-one hundred lead service lines in town, again, mostly in the in the core neighborhoods. Just real kudos to our engineering and public works department. This has been a lot of work to try and get this, get this figured out. We do have some unknowns, forty-four unknown service lines, but that we have a few years to get that figured out. As far as the grant funding, that we've talked before, a total of thirty-five million dollars, of which twenty-three, the lower twenty-three would be grant funding. It's sixty-six point five percent. So at the end of the day, just assuming we use all the all the funding, I'm not sure we will, but it'd be eleven million seven hundred thousand for the local share. And then regardless of what's decided, if we do this program, we will have a drinking water SRF loan. It's really good terms, thirty-year, point five percent interest. And then the payments wouldn't begin until twenty, thirty or or later. If we went through the program, the annual loan payment would be about four hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. And then one thing we we are applying, or we have applied for grant funding, and we'll look for additional funding to help get get down that local share a little bit more. We did have some good news. Last Thursday, Friday, we we were successful in getting an award letter for a grant we applied for in December of last year, which is not near the volume of money, but it will help chip away at that local share. So. With the recommendation night, just the considerations, it's really, and and then just on the on the picture here to the to the right, it shows the public side and private side. So again, most of them are on the private side from the curb stop to the house. But with this recommendation, just the considerations we went through, it's just a one-time chance at really large pool of funding. Really concerned about that customer participation percentage. We did talk to another system, which was more at the, say, eighty, ninety percent. And the participation, it was just kind of trickling in. So even at that, where it's only ten to twenty percent customers on the customer side, it's it's tough to get them out of service. So so participation percentage, look at other regional cities. And then our timeline for the grant funding, it's gone in twenty thirty unless we get get an extension on it. And then just, I talked about this earlier, but just the future workload with the new regulations, it's going to be challenging, just as is. But if we, the more service lines we get out, it'll be very helpful. So and then just efficiencies or construction efficiencies, if we have a good percentage of 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 people interested in the service line replacement. So here's, gets into the recommendation. What we're doing, it's potential of a hundred percent coverage by the water utility for the for the local share. And what we would do is if we had sign-ups, we would charge, when we do the lead service line replacement, we do a flat charge of a thousand dollars upon replacement. We wouldn't initially send an invoice. We would log it, but the the added thousand dollars would be waived if the customer completed their portion of the responsibility. Because there are some things that we have to have the customer do and follow up. And just from thirty years of sampling for lead in in Fargo, it's very, it's, most, most customers get the samples pretty good right away, probably eighty, ninety percent. It's just a real struggle to get just the sampling done. So that's what we're recommending. As long as the customer lives up to their responsibilities with their service line replacement, we would waive that last thousand dollars. And then with the with the loan payment, if the infrastructure sales tax is extended, that would be used for the loan payment. If if not, if it's not extended, then it would have to go on on rates, but it would be a pretty low percentage of rates. So the recommended motion, kind of the key things here, again, it's the thousand dollars with initial installation that can be waived if the customer gets, does the things they need to do. And then it's only valid if if the grant funding stays in place from the federal state. And then also, the sales tax would cover the loan if it's extended. Otherwise, it would have to be rates. So that's the key things. But you have the motion. I welcome any questions.
You have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have questions.
There's your.
So Troy, can I ask, what's your, how will it work? Is it first come, first served? Can you talk about that, people that are interested in it?
Yeah, thank you. That's a, that's a very good question. So what we did is we worked, we're working with the state. It's it's almost finished, not quite finished. But we did a facility plan. And so we looked at the north and south side. So what we likely do, unfortunately, we can't get them all done in one year. It's going to take a few years. So we would target certain areas of town where we can, you know, go one after the other and get them, get a kind of clearer section of town and move on to the next section. And that hasn't been totally determined where we start yet. But we just, to be most efficient with the construction, we just target certain areas of town, clear that, and then move to the next section. And and in theory, we, you know, hopefully be done five or six years, but that it wouldn't be quite first come, first served. But there's been quite a bit of interest.
So my follow-up is, so do you want the citizens to start contacting you or not yet, until you know which areas are you going, will you, how will that work?
Yeah, we're we're working on the program right now. So we'll we'll have those details. We'd have those details shortly, within a month or so. But we do have, like, we've had about fifteen percent of the customers with lead service lines. When we sent out the notices last fall about that they had lead service line, we had quite a big interest in receiving more information. But we'll be releasing all that within, you know, a month or two.
Just one more, Mr. Chair. The, is there a possibility to get more grants? Because to me, this seems like, well, first of all, we have to, I mean, it's a great thing for our system, but I think there's, is that a possibility?
Yeah, and then, like I said, we did apply. We got a smaller one. We got awarded. So we're we're truly looking at wherever we can find help to get a little higher percentage. But I think, I think the federal state, the one we're talking about tonight, I think that's pretty, pretty locked. Although they did say it's at least this amount. So there's not, it's not like, so the sixty-six and a half percent, it's at least that. It could be more, but I question whether it'd be much more than that. But we'll keep talking to them, and we'll keep looking for other sources of funding. No doubt about it.
Thank you.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Troy. Couple thoughts. When I hear these days, federal and state grant monies, I get nervous. Couple thoughts, um, when I hear these days, federal and state grant monies, I get nervous. How secure are these grants? And how, how, how much confidence do we have that the rug won't be pulled under our feet nationally?
Yeah, um, so when I've talked to the state, I know that this, this funding, this grant funding for Fargo is, I can say it's in North Dakota's accounts, but I can't, you know, I can't say with certainty that, that, that wouldn't change, but at least at this point in time, they're in North Dakota accounts.
All the more reason to accelerate action. Secondly, is how do we, how do you keep, how do we address folks that fall through the cracks? There's homes, homeowners, property owners, we don't even know how to find them sometimes. How do we make sure nobody loses out on this chance to get their property brought up to this necessary standard?
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a very good question. So, um, for one, annually now, for, annually, we're gonna have to send out notices that they have a lead service line, um, uh, so that, that's EPA mandated, so homes, and that's where we got the, a lot of questions and interest, um, last fall, when we did that in October. Um, so that's one thing, and then the, the program itself, we are, we're gonna definitely get, um, um, information out mailers by several different means to let people know about the, the program, and I think, I think it'd be, just with the outreach we're, we're gonna do, I think it'd be, uh, somewhat slim that they wouldn't know about it, so we're gonna try very hard to let people know, both by the regulated means, EPA mandated information we send out, and then also just trying to outreach and let people know about it, and, uh, so that's how we would kinda target it, but, um, we'll work hard at making sure people don't fall through the cracks, is how we'd try to answer that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item forty, recommendation to direct City Attorney's Office to draft a residence to Fargo Municipal Codes twenty-five dash one five one eight, A and ten dash zero three two six, Commissioner Zabalski, or Chief Zabalski to explain.
Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner, Chief, thank you. Uh, good evening, Commissioners. As part of our department's ongoing efforts to collaborate with our downtown community partners and our businesses, it was discovered that several years ago, a number of ordinances that addressed behavior were changed from infractions, which allow our officers to make a physical arrest, to non-criminal fines. Non-criminal fine does not allow our officers to take any enforcement action whatsoever other than issuing a citation and walking away from behavior. This has shown over time to be ineffective in terms of the department's ability to address these issues and alleviate a large amount of community concern associated with them. This effort is not an arrest-only solution, but would be in combination with our department booking station, and would also further the future facilitation of a deflection or diversion program that the department has been partnering on with Public Health as part of the Bloomberg Project Initiative. Two of the ordinances identified that are currently non-criminal fines are urinating in public and consuming alcohol in public. The city attorney has reviewed both of these and determined there is no bar to re-categorize them as infractions. The suggested motion is in your packet, I'm happy to read it if you would like, and I'm also happy to answer any questions.
I have public hearing first, and I'll do that, and then we'll go to questions if you don't mind. Deborah Fredrickson, be the first speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Deb Fredrickson from Fargo. I support passing the ordinance changes before you today. I have witnessed some of these concerning behaviors from time to time, and I believe we need to make the downtown experience enjoyable and stress-free for all. Contrary to stereotype, downtown Fargo is much more family-friendly than some of you think, some of us think, and we should do everything in our power to enhance and preserve that by passing this. Family-friendly venues such as Broadway Square, Island Park, the New Water Park, the Plains Art Museum, the Library Children's Wing, I was just over at the library and I saw several little, little children, um, activities there, skating rinks, street fair, summer festivals, as well as the FMCT returning to Fargo next year. I believe we have every right to have some baseline expect, expectations of acceptable social behavior from all who are in our downtown. Such negative behavior affects all the components of downtown, not just our visitors and customers. Federal and city government employees have their offices here. Five thousand residents call downtown home. It is, after all, a residential neighborhood. Many historic churches downtown, the big businesses, the banks and investment houses. NDSU, of course, has three campuses here, Renaissance, Kline Berry. All of the above may be affected by negative behavior. The small businesses perhaps are most acutely affected by these negative behaviors. All small businesses are on the street level of downtown, adjacent to the sidewalks, and they are on the front lines when these unfortunate incidents occur. Most are mom and pop businesses who have seen foot traffic go down a bit, and they witness this negative behavior right outside their front doors. I am not a small business owner, just a private citizen, but I believe very strongly that any decisions made by the commission about downtown, either now or in the future, must also take into account the situation of small business owners. They are the face of downtown. They are, oops, wow, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rocky Schneider.
Hi, I'm Rocky Schneider with the Downtown Community Partnership. I think Deb said it very well, and I just wanna point out, thank you to the chief and the entire city team, this is how I think solutions are supposed to come forward. We identified behaviors we did not wanna see downtown that were impacting the customer experience, impacting the perception and overall vibrancy of downtown. We brought that to the chief, the chief brought up some issues and constraints that he was having with his officers, and so we figured out, how do you close that gap between what we wanted to see downtown and what they were able to do? This is a, a, a good start, we hope there's some more work, you know, on some other behaviors, and I think these two are some critical ones that we can, uh, start on and get agreements on, and we have a number of other, um, activities and efforts underway too, to kinda continue to enhance that customer experience downtown. As Deb talked about, we, uh, we know that these are, are negative experiences that people are having, and, uh, you may come down and never experience them, you may come down and experience them and then go talk about it, and so we wanna, we wanna limit that, and this really gives the police downtown the tools they need, but I, I do wanna stress that our, our goal isn't just to arrest everybody, it's to give the police officers the ability to engage with people, and so this allows them to engage and, you know, try to correct the behavior, and ultimately, they have the teeth necessary then if they need to make arrests. And so our, our goal isn't just to put everybody in jail with these changes, I think there are excellent changes that allows our police the, the flexibility to make that decision on the street when it's needed. So anyways, I just wanna urge you to pass this, and, uh, I think it's a great step forward, and I appreciate all the collaboration and partnership on this.
Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Colpak?
Yeah, thank you, Deb and Rocky, for your comments, and I very much appreciate the collaboration that's gone on behind the scenes with staff and downtown partners. I know Commissioner Strand, you serve on the DCP Board and have been active in those conversations as well. One, my one follow-up question to the chief is, um, we, sometimes some of these changes that we make have unintended consequences, so just what kind of attention will we have to monitoring any, any outcomes?
Sure, uh, well, it would be really part of our larger plan. In fact, to your point, the unintended consequence is that we can't do anything currently, and it's created quite a problem, so.
Sure.
Um, our officers have discretion when they can make an arrest, as long as we lawfully can make an arrest based on the penalty, right? Uh, so we'll be continuing to work with Public Health, um, and taking the same approach we do in all our neighborhoods, specifically downtown, with some of those folks, uh, homeless, mental health, addicted, et cetera, in trying to get them either to the right place or, um, de-escalate the situation, but there are just times when we're left with no other alternative, and, again, based on the concerns of, uh, the rest of the community, we have to be in a position to take some other action.
Thank you.
Chief, does it change the amount of the fine that somebody might receive?
Uh, I would throw that to the city attorney, 'cause I don't know if that's determined yet.
So the, the fine presently is a hundred dollars, um, as a non-criminal. Um, it would be the recommendation that that continue as the fine, of course, it can be up to a thousand dollars, and that would be at the discretion of the municipal court judge.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Strand.
Thank you. Um, I, I questioned initially is, is this is, this motion is to direct us to, to start this, is it, is this the final decision? Or are we asking for a report back and recommended policy changes and ordinances specifically?
Um, I, I think it's both, and do you want me, should I just read the motion and elaborate on that?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at it, but it confuses also.
So there's two parts, revising the penalty for both consuming alcohol and urination in public from non-criminal to an infraction, and then directing the city attorney to review additional similar ordinances as provided by the police department for similar consideration and action before the commission. So tonight, we are asking to revise the penalty for those two offenses only. We'll conduct a further review at the city attorney's office, talk with our partners. Again, there's some things that have been identified, but we may be constricted by state law on some of the offenses, they might be by state law, non-criminal, and we can't make it a, uh, a higher penalty, if you will, uh, so we'll have to look at all that, but whatever else we do, we'll bring before the commission as a new item.
John, for instance, sleeping on a sidewalk or sleeping in a storefront, you might wanna look at the other ordinance that are available. There were some questions about the panhandling, what you do in regards to that, so the request basically is for Nancy, just to look at, are there any other areas that this needs to be done? The concern of the downtown business community is oftentimes a police officer could come, give a ticket, but nothing happens, and the person rips it up or walks away. So the idea is, is what brings or restores order in the downtown is what part of the thought process is, and just for the legal team to look at that, are there any other areas? Obviously, office, uh, obviously oftentimes drinking in public is an issue, and store owners watch that out front and can't do anything about it, so that was one of the issues.
Right, and just to, I think the city attorney probably has a process piece, 'cause there's a couple meetings that would need to occur for the, the change to, to be in effect, if that was your real question.
So, so let me just think out loud for a moment, be, I wear, I wear the hat also of, of liaison to public harm reduction and public health, and nobody wants to see urination in public, and nobody wants to see, you know, public intoxication, nobody wants to see that, but, but we also have a full jail, you know, so, and then we're on a fine line where I'm not so sure, I wanna make sure we're not criminalizing homelessness and targeting some people, um, but our jails' full, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day. Why don't we just put some urinals out there and some porta-potties out there? How long do we have to ask for porta-potties in public? You know, we've, we've vetted the Portland Lou concept, we're not the only city that has this, but people put urinals in public facilities out there, we don't, but then we're gonna arrest people because we don't have facilities to help them. And I lived downtown, I saw this way too much. I saw lots of examples of it, and I'm not countering the need for this, but I just wanna know as a result of what we, we want, and, 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 and we, and we don't have a room in the jail. So I just don't know how this adds up. What are you gonna do if you arrest somebody? Where are you gonna take them?
We'd book them at our station, and as I said, this kinda flows in, this would be a, a behavior in which if the person was open to diversion and deflection, that we could from there, once booked, refer over to Public Health so that that piece could pick it up, so that's part of the, kinda the strategic plan for all of this, so, um, this is not an issue that the jail, I mean, you're right, the jail is full.
It is.
So we wouldn't take them there, they would be booked and released.
I just don't know why we can't allow porta-potties. It would, what's wrong with having that discussion and breathing some life into some practical solutions that, that are, that address the issues of people needing to, to, to go to the bathroom, and they're out in a place where there's no opportunity to? I just don't know, I just, I, I, I appreciate this, I really do, and I appreciate the work put into it. Now, I'm also watching in Bismarck, you know, they're, they're lowering some of the other, uh, uh, fines and citations for things like marijuana possession and things, and yet we're stepping up public urination. I, I just don't know the right answer. I, I, I'd like to know, I'd like to know more, frankly, what others have done, what they've done that worked, what doesn't work, where they've gone upon successes, successes, and where they haven't, and I'd like to see some porta-potties, just frankly, you know? That's just where I'm at. Nothing to do with our law enforcement, nothing to, but you know, that'd be a human thing to do. Frankly.
John, I was under the impression there is a porta-potty outside beyond the engagement center.
Uh, where?
By the engagement center.
All over downtown. Broadway. All the way over to, I mean, all over downtown. That's just me.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. Recommendation to extend the camping resolution to four thirty twenty-five. Brenda Derrick to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The police chief and our director of Fargo-Cast Public Health, along with our planning director, have been meeting to coordinate the city strategies to address the concerns downtown for when the camping resolution ends, along with when our winter war, when our winter warming ends. Through those discussions and their strategic outlook, um, you will see a recommendation requesting that we align the ending of these two dates, which would extend, um, the ending of the camping from March twenty-third to April thirtieth, and we are all here to, and happy to answer any questions you would have.
Do we have any questions? Commissioners? We could ask a little bit about the camping, how would this affect camping?
Um, when the resolution was scheduled to end March thirtieth, we didn't have.
Closer to the mic.
When the resolution to end camping was scheduled for sep, for, for March thirtieth, we didn't have the partnership established with United Way and the FM Coalition to End Homelessness and their campaign for the United to End Homelessness, the extension of the camping resolution within the boundaries established within the resolution, to have that continue allows that campaign to increase the matrix of their financial and physical assets to move the people from winter warming into, uh, a home situation.
So we'd expect after April thirtieth, the city of Fargo camping would not be allowed?
It would go back into the ordinance, would be enforced as it was written.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I.
Mr. Turnberg.
I, uh, this concerns me, having grown up on a river, because this time specifically, we're going, I spoke with a meteorologist today, and I asked, when do they expect the river to break up? So right now, we have how many, like maybe five camps?
We currently, there are currently five camps that are out there, we have one camper. The camps that are there have been abandoned, and we'll be working with the one camper that is existing in the, in the river area.
So extending it to April thirtieth, now we run into the risk, it's getting nicer, more people move back along the river, but the river's gonna break up, and all of that trash is gonna head to Grand Forks, and any person that's there could potentially end up in a flooding situation in the river and be harmed. So I think this timing is just a terrible time to extend it.
We had scheduled and discussed previously about doing the cleanup when the ground was thawed. Right now, it's thawed, but it's a bit soft for us to be able to go out to do that with our Public Works Department, so as soon as it is soft enough where people, where the things can be released and cleaned, it will be cleaned up, hopefully before the water rises would be taken away.
But if we extend the camping, then doesn't that encourage people to go back and camp? Should the weather warm up, and then we have an even bigger mess to clean?
We'll still have winter warming in order to allow people a safe, temperature-controlled place to be through that time. If they don't choose to come inside, they'll have limited abilities to be in those boundary areas, again, not up and down the corridor as it had been previous to the ordinance. Um, yes, it could include people going back to the camping areas, but we'll be giving them notices in time, and most of them would self-select to move on, or we would assist.
And I think, um, there is a part in the resolution that says if they are not engaged, so knowing that we have that one camper, as we see any new camps pop up, if they're not utilizing the Engagement Center or winter warming, then they're not engaged, and we will be asking them to move.
I just think it's, it's dangerous to the people, the river, specifically this time of year, and we just keep kicking the can down the road. We've set this date, and let's stick to it, and, and, I mean, we've had it in place since December of last year.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I'd like to commend Fargo for, for taking this topic on and, and working it so creatively. Uh, it's somewhat of a social experiment, social experiment that we've done here where we have ordinances, but we give some breathing room, knowing we don't have facilities like put people in jail and stuff, so. put people in jail and stuff, so give them some time. But I, I know when this surfaced in, in my head, it was, it was the desire, some wanted it in 30 days and then we extended it to 90 days and their request was, well, if we can't get it done, let's give us the room to do it and finish it and do it right. You know, so that's where I'm at. And, and here's, you know, we had two people, I believe, freeze to death in Fargo recently and they weren't homeless people. The job our people have done to save lives is absolutely commendable and, and noteworthy that we've not had any frozen, freezing deaths of, of this population. And to have just one person on the river right now, kudos to, to our hard work to try, find a, a meeting ground for everybody. So I'm all about, I'm, I'm okay with extending this for another month and that, yeah, the rivers are going to rise and they were, they're not going to, people aren't going to stay there anyway. But I'll, I'll, I'll keep working with our public health and, and our law enforcement and our, our harm reduction people to try and do our level best to make this work and save lives.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
No.
Turnberg?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 42, application for property tax exemption, improvements made to building. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Did you get it?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Liaison and Commissioner assignment updates. Commissioner Pepcorn?
No update.
Commissioner Turnberg?
No update.
Commissioner Colpak?
Yes, I have one slide today. It actually speaks to a question Commissioner Pepcorn had earlier about grants. So we can go to the second slide here. The Water Utility received notice last week that it's been awarded a grant to help the city of Fargo replace lead service lines across the city. The grant of up to 350,000 over two years is from the thriving community's competitive grant program and the money will help to pay for work in the Jefferson and Carleton neighborhoods. This successful grant application was a team effort by Fargo's Water Utility, planning, engineering, and finance departments, along with engineering from AE2S. So congratulations and thank you.
Even Jefferson, your neighborhood will be happy.
My neighborhood will be happy.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, just to let my peers on the commission know, a week from now, I'll be in, in Washington, DC with our congressional delegation and the North Dakota League of Cities and the National League of Cities. And in my capacity as a, a vice chair of the Human Development Federal Policy Committee, I'm really looking forward to the dynamic there in DC. I don't know what to expect. I just, you know, everything's so topsy-turvy right now and I'm, I'm eager to meet with our, our leaders there and, and get a sense of confidence, you know, that what's going on will, will not trickle down to us in a harmful way ever, ever at all. But it's, it's really changing, challenging times and, and, and everything we kind of have been working on, sometimes it's just turned upside down. So I'll, I'll report back to you what I learned in that capacity next week in DC and, and we'll be with a lot of peers and I think there's 2,500 city leaders will be there across the country. I, I know that there was a, an offer extended to Secretary Burgum to be a keynote speaker. That won't be happening this meeting, but it'll probably be happening in November. And so there's some real benefits that can come with our connections to these national efforts too at that level. But these are changing times.
Go back to the agenda. The item one was pulled, time changed to 5:05 for public hearings effective 7/7/25. Commissioner Colpak?
Yes, thank you. I know we discussed changing the time for public hearings at one of our governance conversations and this was a follow-up item from that. And at the time, you know, it, it was for finding efficiencies in the order of the agenda and not confusing perhaps us up here, but, but more importantly, you know, having a flow for the, for the audience and attendees who are engaging with city government. And since that time, we had a presentation on the Zen City results and our recommitment to more community engagement is going to be a focus moving forward. And for that reason, along with hearing from a couple of constituents who reached out and said, I know it's a minor change to go from 5:15 to 5:05 for public hearings, but many folks work till five. And again, it doesn't address those that have different shift schedules, of course. But a number of people work until five and their concern was that, and these are from two constituents who have been engaging in our meetings and have been showing up when we've had public hearings, to keep it at 5:15 for that reason. So I just wanted to explain the reason I won't now be supporting this, even though in our governance conversation, it intuitively made sense. I honestly didn't think about that implication. So that's my background.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Pepcorn?
So my comment is the meeting still starts at five. And so it's, it doesn't change the start of the meeting at all. And so the other thing is, it's just the order of the agenda. Right now, it happened today, we're at 5:15. We have to fill in time until 5:15 and so that jumbles up the order of the agenda. So by changing this, it makes it easier for the staff. It's easier to keep track of the agenda and the meeting still starts at five. So it's not changing anything other than giving us the ability to follow the order. So thank you, Mr. Chair. Those are my comments.
Commissioner Strand?
I, I, thank you. I just have a question. Has the meeting always been at five? Or, or has it ever been at 5:30 or a different time? I don't know.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Colpak?
I'll clarify one of my comments. The point is that by having it, public hearings start at 5:15, people can get here by 5:15 and engage in those without having to be here right at five. So I just wanted to clarify.
The only thing I'd comment to it is like tonight, I had the ambulance report going a little bit early. Maybe somebody wanted to hear that and thought it was going to be at 5:30 or 5:20 or five, whatever. I think sometimes by going to 5:05, then we don't move, it's hard to move anything in front of 5:05. And then for most people, they can come online, they can video, they can email us, they have a lot of opportunities they never had before. To your point, John, five o'clock. I remember in commission sitting in the old chambers, if you didn't show up, you didn't get to talk. I mean, that was it. You were, you were out of luck to do that. We had all the assessment abatement issues today. Nobody talked about their sewer, talked about the different items that you might think they have to talk about. I think for efficiency, it just makes people understand more the order of the agenda a little bit more clearly. And yes, the move to 5:05 is basically to make sure there's not a substitution. I also had complaints from people that we substituted and they didn't like what I substituted in place of it because they were anticipating that later in, in the discussion. Now, they hadn't signed up to speak to it, but they wanted to hear the discussion. So I, I, I was fine with the 5:05. It'd be the, the question, yes, decided what they'd like to do.
Mayor, just another que, have we ever contemplated like the legislature does where people can submit like written testimony? Do we do that? Do we receive written testimony in public hearings or, I, I don't know. I, this is a good concern from citizens, but I'm also trying to figure out what, how we can creatively get there.
Mike, do we, we accept emails and things on concerns, right?
Yes, absolutely. So Mayor Commissioners, so in addition to the virtual comments, that is a new feature in the last several years, we do allow for written comments, commissioners can be contacted by email. Just on the question of history, we asked all of our cabinet group, just if there is any recollection of history, for at least the last 20 years, perhaps longer than that, the hearing has been 5:15 and the meeting time has been five o'clock. There was a time in Mayor Furness's time that the public hearings were 5:30. So there was one moment in time, probably at least three decades ago, where the public hearings were noticed for 5:30. And I just wanted to make one note, if approved by the commission tonight, we are talking prospectively about any hearings that would occur from July 7th and beyond. July 7th is a regular commission meeting and we wanted to make sure that we were clearing the deck of any additional hearings that are already in progress or, or pending to be scheduled in April and May and June, for those to continue to occur at 5:15. So this change would be effective on July 7th and, and forward after that. Thank you.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you. Michael, I'm, yes, people can reach out to us, but is there a formal way to input a, a, a written statement to be heard by everybody and received by everybody like a public hearing statement is? I don't, that doesn't exist now, does it?
So, so if you're, if the question, Commissioner Strand, that's a very fair question. So if the question is, if they don't contact the entirety of the commission, it would maybe only go to an individual commissioner right now. You are correct in that regard, but in many cases, like you saw, many of the feedback points received over the weekend, Kemper's forwarding that to the entire commission. If the city commission contact form gets an email, all commissioners are going to receive that. So, but it very well could be the case, you're correct, that only one commissioner or two commissioners would receive a, a private citizen's email. That's correct.
But I'd remind you, John, legislatively, if we put a letter in, it's not read to the public.
No, but they receive it. All of them.
Committee does.
You know they get it. You know it's in their hands. My thinking is, let's see how this works and go forward. But I'd also be open to make, if there are citizens feeling left out or aren't being heard, let's, let's pay attention to that. And if we can just make it a formal submission so they know that it's just, it's received just like as if they spoke to us personally.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion would be saying, move the time to 5:05, starting Jen, or July 7th, 2025. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
No.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item, other item, Commissioner Pepcorn has asked that effective immediately, any overtime hours must be approved ahead of time by the Fargo City Commission. Commissioner Pepcorn to explain.
Yeah, I just, I would encourage people to read the forum, the Saturday, March 1st forum. Excellent column by Robin Hubner. When I read that, I was just so surprised. And to me, the first thing we have to do is stop this from continuing. It's evidence that we need to make a lot of changes because the, the, we had one employee make $80,000 in overtime in one year. And it was over 10 years, $31 million. And so each department head, you're in charge of monitoring your staff and monitoring overtime hours. And so if you have somebody getting, I should, I can't believe I'm saying this, but these are the heads of our department. When you're getting close to overtime hours, you say, you're done for the week. And instead, we are just the last 3.25 million, 3.7 million. So anyway, so the first thing we have to do is stop this and then we are going to have to make some changes, clearly. Because apparently the heads of the departments think they should be compensated highly to manage their staff and clearly they are not managing their hours, which is shocking to me. But to me, as a city commissioner, to read this in the paper, I had no idea this was going on. So I would apologize to the public, our taxpayers, because I clearly have not been doing my job. And, and I just want to thank Robin Hubner, excellent reporting to uncover this. But this is outrageous, embarrassing. We will get it fixed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pepcorn, I think you're going to have to be schooled up on how this works. We have a lot of people that work overtime. When you want the snows plowed in the wintertime, we have a many people that work overtime. You can't send them home. You have to have them out on the street. Police and fire are the same thing. We have overtime all the time under those departments. It's three to 5% of our budget. It's budgeted every year. We've budgeted this for 20 years and we have been pretty consistent on that, about three to 5% of our stuff is overtime. I have exempt employees, 30% of my employees are exempt and they put in 70, 700 to 800 hours and we don't even pay them for that. We get a benefit if they're exempt employee. I was talking to a policeman recently and he puts in close to 700 hours that he does got, get paid for. The overtime payment is people have to stay late, do different things for us, go out the middle of the night, take care of a, a light pole, take care of different things that have to happen. In any city, you're going to have overtime. That's just part of running a business in the public sector because otherwise you're going to have too much staff and too much overhead. When we're in COVID times, our health department was begging for people to work. We begged for people all over to work to fill the slots that needed to be filled and those are not fillable. So overtime is much as just a part of any public discussion as there is. And it's part of the cost of doing business. Commissioner Colpak, you had something?
Yep. So I do really encourage the public, if you haven't read the article, to read the article because the points made in the article are very, I think, pragmatic and rational and it's important for the citizens to know the reasons for overtime. So first, to every employee who chooses to work for the citizens of Fargo, thank you. To every employee who agrees to work overtime or is told they must work overtime, thank you for serving Fargo. And to every employee, I apologize that working overtime has been villainized. You, in fact, should be celebrated for the work that you do. Every single example for overtime is explainable. Staffing shortages, winter storms and weather, a major pandemic or a crisis. And all overtime budgets are known as part of each annual budget and all approved as part of the budget process by the city commission. Because overtime can be trended year after year after year. I know fire has done it. In fact, their overtime has gone down recently because they are again more fully staffed. The police department, the same thing. They're fully staffed, but then there are reasons like we have more police presence at public events. So I just thought also, there was a glaring omission in the story about the, to, to Mayor Mahoney's point, the amount of extra hours our staff put in who are exempt, which is 30% of our population of employees. And I want to share one, I want to share one specific example. The amount of extra time by our communication and government affairs leadership team, I asked for this report because they track every single hour, even though they are exempt. They track every single hour they work to serve the citizens of Fargo. In 2023, Mr. Shildberger worked in addition to his 2,080 hours, an additional 1,338.25 hours that went unpaid. The assistant director worked an additional 840.25 hours paid. In 2024, the director of communications worked an additional 865 hours that went unpaid and the assistant director worked 847.75 hours that went unpaid. And we probably have an issue there that we need to address by so much work being done that's not being paid. But I sure as heck congratulate and celebrate the work that they're doing for the citizens of Fargo. So I'll close again. Every employee who works overtime, thank you. I celebrate you and after reading many of the story comments, so do many, many residents.
Commissioner Pepcorn?
Sure, Mr. Chair, just a follow-up. So the 2009 flood, lots of hours, lots of overtime, 100% behind that. Let's say we have the 97 heavy snow. Absolutely. Ben Dow, we got lots of guys doing a lot of hours. How about right now? How about right now? Let's talk about right now. How about snow remover right now? You know what we should be doing? Not paying overtime hours. This is about managing public money wisely and clearly. John, if you had an employee that made $80,000 in overtime at the High Plains Reader, in my business, if I had staff, when you're getting close to over, when you're getting close to overtime hours, you say, you take the rest of the day off. I cannot believe we're not doing that. The, the, the departments aren't monitoring overtime hours and saying, you're done for the week. That is outrageous and we're spending public money. This is embarrassing. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kolpak?
Mr. Chair, I will add that that $80,000 paid by that director was during the pandemic, was paid for via federal dollars for extra work that was required to implement a vaccination campaign and other communications around managing a pandemic. It was a one-time expense because of a crisis situation. And I will add that I trust our directors to manage their departments, knowing when and if they need to utilize overtime. But it's trended and it's watched year after year after year, and I think managed very well. A lot of times, the use of overtime allows us to be very efficient by not, and I will say, one other many comments online about this story was it's clear that we are understaffed as a city, not overworking. So that's another issue from a leadership perspective we need to be talking about, understanding we have real limitations, certainly moving forward with a likely cap on property tax, but with limited and steward oversight of tax dollars. I understand all of that. But where we can continue to get efficiencies, we need to look at that, and I trust our directors and our cabinet to be doing just that.
Perhaps to solve this, we could have Mike present us something with HR and overtime and how it's managed in the city of Fargo. We have policies that follow this and explain this. So police department this year, we have a million dollars in overtime that's kind of coming out, and that's for AIDS events, all the different things that have to happen that go on the community, and concluding going to court when we have arrests or things that have to go, a policeman has to go to those events. So I think it might be great to educate. Dave, it's not like the days in which you can just tell employee to go home because they had too much overtime. It's a time in which if you do a construction project, you will increase the price of a construction project, because if you only allow people to work 8 to 5, then your construction time, you cannot do the road project in timely fashion. That would increase the pricing for the city of Fargo. So the reality is the fact we gain by that, because as I recall many times at this dius, we've had construction projects come in, in, in time and below costs that have helped all of us, and that's because our engineering team was out there taking care of those issues. So there's no other business, there's no resident, Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, when, when, when we, as a community, saw media reporting on, for example, exit interviews, Commissioner Kolpak advanced, well, let's get a formal report to us so we all are more schooled, and you're already suggesting this, Mayor. So we are more schooled at how does it work? What's, what's the lay of land? What are our policies and practices in place now? And balance it. You know, we, we, we didn't give any new employees this last year, not one, if I remember right. Not one. So that leads to other results, like people working overtime. I'd like to see the bigger picture. I'd like to know from HR the details of how, how, how this all works. I'd like to know alternatives and options, you know, for us fiduciarily to go forward and make good, intelligent decisions, you know, but, but this is, I also say, and I'm a media guy, you know, I, I just, when you, you just love it when you put something out there and you got government officials like jumping. But it is an issue we should pay attention to, and it has been brought to our attention, and we should, we should. We, we owe the due diligence to learn more about this relative to the, our overall budgeting process, our overall personnel policies and implementations. So, so it's all good, but we, we, we need to, I want to learn more before I'm just throwing, casting stones.
Brown bag, John, if you'd like on that.
Something like that, Mayor.
Look at all possibilities, overtime versus different policies, employees, who we hire, staffing for success, those types of issues, yes.
And I would throw in there the topic of consultants, in-sourcing, outsourcing, you know, as long as we're going down that path, what are the pros and cons to a budget?
We have no resident comments tonight, there's no speakers tonight. I'm surprised, we have a pretty good audience, but nobody wants to talk tonight, so we're at the end of our meeting.
I proposed a motion. I proposed a motion.
No motion proposed, Dave.
What?
What was a motion, please?
That's what I put in the minutes. That's, I proposed a motion.
Please give me the motion.
Is it not printed anywhere? Isn't, isn't that what I, is it not on the agenda? That's what I called in. So somebody pull it up?
Normally you present a motion, but your motion was to, to effectively immediately, any overtime hours must be approved ahead of time by the Fargo City Commission, which is-
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. I, and saying so in just being good that we're understanding everything, I don't know that I agree with Commissioner Kolpak, that we appreciate our employees and our directors and, and staff. But if it is a big problem, then we should uncover it and, and learn more about it. If it's seasonal, maybe we hire some seasonal workers. But, I mean, it was a little shocking to see 31 million on the paper on Saturday. So I think for residents, that was probably shocking as well. Agree with Commissioner Strand, perhaps we look at consultants and what we're spending there. So is, just a, you're moving to Commissioner Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, this is one motion. I do believe that we need to look at this issue. This is just a temporary thing to, to make sure that all overtime goes for, goes through us for now. We, $31 million? This is an issue that we need to address. Unless you don't think it is an issue, which apparently some people don't, $31 million to me and one person making $80,000 in overtime, that's an issue. But you know, if you don't think so, that's all good. But I'm looking forward to, we are now a motion and a second, I'm looking forward to having you all go on the record voting for this, Mr. Chair.
So Commissioner Pepcorn, when we have a snow event, are we going to have an emergency commission meeting to approve the overtime that Ben Dow has to hire that? Just let me understand how, excuse me, let me understand how the policy works. We are a commission that's supposed to do policy, we're not a commission that's supposed to get into day-to-day operations. You're supposed, you already proved this in the budget, the overtime policy. So what is your sense of what we're supposed to do? If I'm supposed to have an emergency commission meeting anytime, any of my directors have overtime? And by the way, Commissioner, or Chief Zabowski, you might as well talk to me right now because you're going to have overtime in two days, or tonight, right?
I'd be happy to, anytime, anywhere, anytime you call a meeting and discuss overtime hours, anytime, anywhere, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It's non-functional. You basically stand still, the government for no good purpose, other than grandstanding on yourself. We have overtime, it's always been there, so.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Kolpak?
One more comment or two, that I agree with, that our job is not to be in the day-to-day operations, so I just want to reinforce and support that. And I will also add that as part of our annual budgeting process with our liaison departments, we have budget line items that we approve that include the overtime amounts. So we do have oversight today, and it's part of that entire process to understand each of our liaison budgets.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and you know, Commissioner Pepcorn, I, I do appreciate you bringing this up, and the public's expecting us to, okay, the elephants in the living room, we're going to talk about what they're talking about. However, I really think this should have been, the public didn't know this was coming on tonight's agenda. It was added to an agenda after the fact. We approved that agenda modification after the fact. The public didn't know. My suggestion is keep this on the agenda, but, but, and I'll make this motion, let's delay this exact motion until our next meeting so the public has formal notice of it coming. And, and, and that's all I'm saying, is that this is dropped out of the blue. And, and, and last thing I'll say is, there's a lot of times I, I agree, things surface in the public and we have public meetings, and, and the public shows up and they go, why didn't you talk about this? Like one time we had a shooting of a, a citizen, and the public's out there, you remember, yelling at us? And we're here doing our business and doing our agenda and doing our routine stuff. And so that, I appreciate this, but my recommendation is I'll, I'll move, put this to the next